Ladies and gentlemen, we are really sorry that we kept you waiting tonight. Just another meeting went long. I apologize for that. We're going to get going here, I think, right now. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Belval.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marcus.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Again, we apologize for our late start, but welcome, everybody. We'll begin, as always, with the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Acting Superintendent Sleeper.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the audience, and people watching on TV. It was about a month ago that we were celebrating here the arrival of Louisville native and Centaur's graduate, Jack Fisher, was entering the International Space Station, and he's still up there tonight. So, that was very exciting. Well, not to be outdone, Lafayette resident and Fairview High grad Jessica Watkins was named last week as an astronaut by NASA. So, they joined the company of one Scott Carpenter to have Boulder Valley Schools have three astronauts now, and it's very exciting. I don't know of a school district this size in the U.S. that can boast three astronauts. So, it's very exciting news, and we welcome Jessica Watkins aboard and Jack Fisher. I hope everything's spinning nicely up there. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Questions or comments for our Acting Superintendent? Let me begin, Joe, with my thanks. I believe this is your last meeting with us?
That is correct.
You know, you stepped in on very short notice during a challenging time at the district. I'm very grateful to you. Thank you. And enjoy whatever comes next, which I think is back to retirement.
Yeah.
All right.[218.26][218.26](APPLAUSE) Other questions or comments? There's a comment. All right, well, hearing none, thanks again, Joe. We'll move now to public participation, and we have a few speakers signed up for agenda items and a few speakers signed up for non-agenda items. Remind you that the board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. Starts green when your two minutes begins, turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. Turning to our speakers signed up for agenda items, our first speaker is Gabriela Arilano. Thank you, I apologize. Welcome.
And then she doesn't speak English, so I'll be translating for her.
Thank you.
Yo estoy realmente molesta porque me hablaron por teléfono que la niña no podía asistir al programa de verano. No sé por qué es el problema si ya años anteriores había estado en escuela de verano. Entonces ahora la niña me pregunta, mami, ¿por qué no puedo ir a la escuela de verano? Le digo, ah, no sé por qué, solamente me hablaron y me dijeron que ya no puedes ir a la escuela de verano. Ahora le digo, yo ya había pagado, no iba a estar día gratis, yo había pagado mi dinero para que ella pudiera estar en el programa de verano.
Okay, so what she said is that she comes here because she's upset with the fact that her daughter was told she would not be able to attend summer learning this year. And so, she's at home asking why she isn't able to attend, that she, that her daughter is upset as well, and she feels that it wasn't fair because she did pay her fee. She's enrolled and signed up, and at this point, she's not allowed to attend, and so she just finds it that it's not been a fair situation for her.
Sí, 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 si hay niños con educación especial, ¿por qué no poner a un maestro que se especifique a niños con necesidades especiales para separarlos del grupo?
Yeah, and so, she's also wondering why, since she's been able to attend summer school in previous years, why it was this year she was unable to. And her suggestion to the board would be that if there are students who have special needs, that there would be a teacher available to provide those special services for students with IEPs during the summer learning time.
Sure.
That's it.
Thank you. Gracias. Our next speaker on agenda item is Crystal Bilde? Bibby. Sorry, Crystal Bibby. Apologize for that. Signed up for summer learning as well. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having me. My name is Crystal, and I represent a second grader at Sanchez Elementary. I also had the same issue getting the summer learning and schedule for my son was very frustrating, and lack of communication was, made it very frustrating. He does have some special needs as well, an IEP and a behavioral plan, and once I did get the summer figured out, I received a call about a week before school was out saying that he was ineligible for the plan or for summer learning. I reached out to his amazing team at Sanchez, and they were able to help me out with that, but I'd never received a callback from the lady that originally had called me, and it was pretty frustrating. He does have some special accommodations and just maybe some more information, as well as some extra support for those kids that do need that summer learning. As well as the other issue I was having, we did receive a contract from the school saying that he was not able to miss any days or be late at all, and that also kind of concerns me because he does have therapies and speech throughout the summer that he needs to attend, as well as to have that supportive summer learning. So, to make those exceptions for those kids that do have, you know, some special needs. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ava Beltran. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I will be translating for Ava.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Primeramente, doy gracias por esta oportunidad porque realmente mi comunidad necesita. Yo quisiera hablar por todos, pero tal vez voy a hablar algo de mí y algo de mi comunidad.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of my community, I'm here to vouch and represent my community.
Yo he hablado con algunas vecinas porque me han contado de que han tenido problemas por cómo registrarse para el programa de lectura de escuela de verano en estas vacaciones.
She's heard of our some neighbors that there's been some issues with the registration for summer learning?
Varios no están acostumbrados a usar la computadora, y este año todo se tenía que hacer por computadora. Y estamos viendo la manera de que por una aplicación, o si también el distrito podía probar cómo inscribirse. Los padres quizá ya tienen un programa así, no estoy muy informada de esto, pero nos gustaría de esa manera que fuera más fácil para las familias que hablan español.
A lot of the concerns come from the registration process of only going online. Many of her colleagues and friends whose students are registering had a hard time registering because of the internet access to computers, and being online was really difficult for many of our community's members to register. And is wondering if there's other ways that we could approach that in the near future.
Otra de las razones, también queríamos tener más información porque se especificó que solamente tenían la oportunidad de faltar un día más en este programa, y si faltaban más, tenían que salirse del programa. Y pensamos, a ver, si un niño tiene temperatura y en la escuela siempre nos han dicho, si tiene temperatura, la última temperatura que tenga después de 24 horas puede venir.
The next one quickly is regarding the attendance policy and how that is impacting a lot of students if it's required for the student to go even, you know, in the case of an emergency or health issues.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the Speakers on Agenda Items. Moving to our speakers signed up on non-agenda items. I have two. Noel Davidson. Good evening, welcome.
Hi. I'm going to do like a process flow for dyslexia, so just a second. Okay. Good evening, Board members. My name is Noel Davidson. I'm a mom of a dyslexic kindergartner. He'll be going into first grade, actually. I would like to say thank you for your time and consideration of dyslexia intervention. I'm an engineer by trade. I have two degrees in engineering and an MBA. So, I'd like to go through my opinion of what's happening with dyslexia from a process flow perspective. I will show you cups, my daughter's cups, sizes representing volumes of students impacted during the process of dyslexia, and for my steps, this represents best practice. The first cup is early warning signs. So, this should be done in preschool. Child fine should be having a checklist for what the warning signs are for dyslexia. It's their responsibility. The second cup has the largest volume and the most impact is in kindergarten. We need screening using good methods, not i-ready. We need dibbles, pals, and most importantly, teacher awareness and training for every teacher. I feel like teachers really know their kid. I got comments back on my son's last report card, and it was clear to me that the teacher knew he had a problem, but never even said the word dyslexia to me. The third piece here is tier one intervention, which is just the general classroom instruction. It has the second largest impact. If we use the right instruction methods, i.e. structured literacy, you can decrease the amount of kids going to special education. These last two are tier two and tier three intervention. That represents the kids that are on IEPs, need small group intervention, and one-on-one. BVSD's root cause to dyslexia is we've missed every step here. No attention to early warning signs, no screening, outdated classroom instruction methods, lack of teacher awareness and training, wrong programs given to students in tier two and tier three interventions. The district solution provided by the literacy department is focused on downstream processes like training literacy specialists for tier two and tier three interventions. It is missing everything upstream. To really fix dyslexia, we need the $1.2 million that was proposed to have a robust and comprehensive plan to fix every part of the process, not just focusing on special education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Busey. Mr. Busey, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Busey, and my son is dyslexic. I would like to start by thanking all the board members for your consideration and recent discussions on the topic of dyslexia. Many of you have written one or more requests for information, done your own research, or have spoken with other school districts about their own plans. You have been patient while listening to the 70-plus parents who have spoken before you, and several of you have met with members of BVKID to hear our concerns directly. Due to your engagement, questions, and open discussion on the topic, the district administration has finally taken notice and appears to be making some steps in the right direction. However, without your direct participation, I have little doubt we would still be hearing more of the previous year's excuses and empty claims of support for our dyslexic children. You are making a difference. On behalf of BVKID and everyone in our community affected by dyslexia, I offer our sincere gratitude to you all for helping to raise the bar. Thank you. While there are some positive movements from the administration, there remains the serious lack of understanding of just how to support these children. There's still no strategic plan or commitment, and the budget proposed by the administration is a symptom of that fact. We are left with ad hoc remedies and a budget you received as an ad hoc and inadequate as a result. We also continue to be frustrated by the misinformation that is provided in the responses to your RFIs, and we simply cannot allow them to stand unchallenged. As recently as May 16th, the administration referenced the International Literacy Association in one of its responses. It's hard to believe that anyone in the business of helping kids with dyslexia would look to this group for guidance. Just Google ILA and dyslexia, and you'll see they have nothing to offer in terms of solutions or a history of helping dyslexic kiddos to read. That is probably because the publisher behind them offers LLI and has no product for dyslexia. This is just one example. On a positive note, looking forward, we're hoping that meaningful change can come to our district, and we're excited to work with Dr. Samantha Messier and Interim Superintendent Dr. Cindy Stevenson to create a long overdue strategic plan for dyslexia. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public participation. Thank you, everybody, and we appreciate your patience again. Next on the agenda is board communication. Board members, anything you'd like to communicate? Tina?
Primeramente, gracias para venir y compartir sus historias de la escuela de verano. Muchas gracias. And, Joe, I'm hoping we can learn into some, look into some of the registration issues with the summer learning program and just seeing how we can improve that process so it's equitable. And, just thank you again for coming and advocating for dyslexia. I think we're still having discussions about that budget. And the last thing I want to do is I also want to thank Joe for coming in and helping lead the district in this period of change, and I also want to thank all the staff and the principals and the teachers who've been navigating through this. I know it's been difficult. I know it's a big change, and I just want to extend my gratitude for all of you for making sure we had a good end of the year. I know summer has started in our household, and I just want to be, appreciate all the work people have done. Thanks.
Thanks, Tina. Kathy?
Don't want to add too much. I just want to echo Tina's thanks to Joe for stepping up and leading us through. I really, really appreciate it, and to staff and principals and people who are here and people who are listening, because we understand it's been difficult, but Boulder is an excellent district, and I'm confident that we will continue under Dr. Stevenson to pursue excellence and to do what we need to for our students. So, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Kathy. Other, yes, Richard?
Thank you very much, Joe.
Always a pleasure, Richard.
Muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes que vinieron a participar aquí hoy. I had a meeting with, I have a dream, and that prompted me to request an RFI concerning summer learning. And I did get some responses on summer learning, and I hope they'll talk about that tonight when they make a presentation. My understanding that there's a number, a great number of sped kids enrolled in summer learning activities already, kids with 504s, and a number of kids that are in read plans, a number of kids that are English language learners. So, I too think that we need to start looking at the registration process because the online registration process, I know it does not work for the Latino community. The other thing, too, is I think we need to start looking at the attendance policy because it seems to me that it's quite rigid attendance policy, and as you heard, there's some issues around attendance that could easily be fixed around some flexibility with attendance policies. The fact that some of the families have been disenrolled from the program, and there's no explanation in terms of disenrollment, I believe needs to be explained, too. So, I'm hoping that we can get some of those answers answered tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Any other comments, board members? Yes, Jenny?
Well, I'll add my thanks to Joe for stepping in. I hope we'll be seeing you in the future in some other, some other roles. We've appreciated you very much. And again, summer started, and I'm really excited to hear about the summer learning program tonight, and thanks to our staff for carrying on this spring. I appreciate Tina and Kathy's remarks. What I really wanted to say was that I also wanted to thank TEENS up in Netherlands. I attended that graduation since our last board meeting. I think it must have been the last one in the district, and TEENS is a program in Netherlands for at-risk students who wouldn't be graduating or who weren't making it successfully in, in the high school. They're all from Netherlands, so I suppose Netherlands high school. But it was a wonderful graduation, very inspiring, and I was very glad to be there with Mark Schaefer. It's a great program, and I'm glad that we have that kind of partnership with, with that community organization that helps us work with students who, some of whom, well, in fact, all of whom I think are going places in life. They all showed great promise, and so I was thrilled that we could at least, you know, get them through high school so that they could, they could develop that promise. That's the first step. So, I wish them all well.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other comments, board members? Richard, additional comment?
Yeah, just an additional one because I totally spaced out the fact that Dr. Cabrera and I attended the summit middle school graduation, which is a wonderful experience for me in seeing all those middle school kids graduate and go on to their high schools of their choices. So, thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Any other comments? Shelley?
Just want to thank the parents who came forward tonight about summer learning and dyslexia. As I've said, I think a number of times, we really don't know often what's going on out there unless parents come and tell us. So, I appreciate the education we've gotten from the dyslexic parents, and I wasn't aware of the summer learning issues, so I'm grateful for that as well. I wanted to add that not long ago, this board passed a resolution to name a softball field after Pete Sprinkle. Today, I attended that dedication. Mike Cuskely was there with his machine to lift the sign up on the side of the field, and there was quite a large crowd there, and it made Pete very, very happy. And I just, just wanted to point out that, you know, what's very simple for us to do, like that, make that resolution, made a community very, very happy. And, and I think that we should go out of our way to do a little more of that. It was a wonderful gathering today, so.
Thanks, Shelley. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, board members, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is Information Item on Summer Learning. Joe?
I'd like to introduce the Community Schools Director, Melinda Groom, and the Assistant Superintendent, Leslie Arnold, to present tonight's Information Item.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Great, thank you, President Fuqua, members of the board, Superintendent Sleeper. Thank you for having us tonight to talk about the summer learning program for this summer. This is the first time that we've come prior to summer learning, at least that, since I've been here, to kind of give you some information, and we'd be very happy to answer any questions that you may have at the end of, of the presentation. And so, I'm going to just briefly talk a little bit about the history. Last, I think it was in October, we came to you to talk about the summer learning results from last summer. So, we're going to try to bring the information to you ahead of time, tonight, so you can hear about how we're evaluating what has changed in the summer program, and hopefully next week you will be able to join us, I think it's in two weeks, join us on a tour of the summer learning program and, and be able to talk about it and actually see it in action. So, this fall, former Superintendent Dr. Messenger had asked that the summer learning program be put under the community schools kind of area under Dr. Groom's supervision. Not that it was being folded into community schools, it's just that since Melinda does a lot of, I think, kind of scheduling with the buildings over the summer and working with community partners, it seemed to make the most fit. And so, Dr. Groom and I spent quite a bit of time this fall and winter in talking with our nursing staff, our transportation staff, our food service staff, in order to get them prepared for kind of the shift and working with the bond department on where the school, summer school sites would actually be. So, we're going to first talk a little bit about what's happening in the buildings. We'll talk about what the different levels, and then at the end, we will, like I said, be able to take questions.
Good evening. I'm Melinda. I'm going to talk about the intent of BVSD summer learning, and it comes from the statistics lottery that we put in a little video for you, so when you have an opportunity, if you would watch that. But we did change the intent of summer learning this year to include, to mitigate the difference between high-income students and low-income students and the opportunities they have during the summer, essentially kind of working on that faucet theory. In the, during the school year, students of low income have the faucet turned on, and they have many opportunities available to them. But in the summer, those, that faucet turns off. So, while students of high-income families have the opportunity to attend camps and some fun summer activities, what we were offering in the elementary was more of a sit-and-get curriculum, and so we wanted to change that up a little bit and give them an opportunity to experience some field trips, change the curriculum to the STEM curriculum, more project-based curriculum, in order to give them a more fun experience, so to speak.
Sam, can I, please? We do have one woman still sitting in the audience. ¿Comprende usted inglés? Más o menos? Necesita traducción?
Alguien de ustedes puede traducir por la señora?
Thank you, Richard.
Gracias.
You.
Okay. So, I wanted to kind of talk about the elementary overview first because that's what we changed the most. We had done the STEM curriculum with middle level last year and decided to go ahead and implement that into the elementary section this year so that they had more of that STEM-based curriculum, project-based. STEM stands for the science, technology, engineering, and math, with a focus on nonfictional reading. So, we did change that this year for elementary. It's more of a project-based, student-centered, focused learning than the regular curriculum of just, I think we did some worksheets and some direct instruction last year. So, the first through fifth, first through third grade, we're doing more of the picture STEM aspect of it. We're using books to transfer the STEM learning, and so their use of literacy, it's used more with literacy. And in the fourth through fifth grade, we're using the tech engineering, which is a national collection of units and lessons that was developed by the CU Engineering Department. Again, both, both areas are wrapped around projects. So, the students are going to field trips on Mondays. They're using the instruction and the information they're getting on Mondays, bringing that back into the classroom on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays to, to help with these projects that they're doing, stimulating. Here's just an overview of the grade levels and what their focus is. And again, the, the field trips are tied to each one of those. So, the students are going on Mondays to the different field trips and then bringing back that information that they've got, wrapping it around the projects that they'll be doing for the next three days.
So, with the middle overview, we had a couple of you last summer come and actually view what the middle-level students were doing in summer learning. And I think Jenny's smiling, so thank you for coming. It was very exciting to see them actively engaged in the curriculum, really thinking about what they were doing, the hands-on activities, and then certainly the model rockets and so forth that they were putting off in Lafayette. And so, part of the curriculum with middle level, we, we went ahead and just kept it the same. We're still working with CU Teach Engineering, and what we did add this summer, though, is field trips to enhance kind of the curriculum that is being taught during the week so that they could actually see how these things would be applied and actually go to the places where they would actually be using the information that they're learning. So, in sixth grade, we've not changed the curriculum for middle level. We're doing the mechanical kind of component of this, and you can see what, some of the things that they are doing. For seventh grade, they're doing still the biomedical For seventh grade, they're doing still the biomedical engineering, so they will be doing quite a bit of hands-on activities and discovery on how to do different things with parts of the body as far as the model lungs, et cetera. And then, for the rising eighth graders, it's the simple machines and it's really talking about looking at those pieces of building components and then how can they make them go further or fly higher or do different things. And so, it's really this trial and error type of approach where it is, again, a very hands-on experience for the students. The evaluation part of this, last year, if you remember, when we came to you, I think it was in October, we really were only looking at the I-Ready scores, especially in elementary, from their spring to their winter, or their, excuse me, their fall scores, to see if there was any type of impact that summer learning had, comparing the students against students who were invited to summer learning but that did not attend summer learning. So, what we've added is, we're still going to do that, and you'll see that in a second, but we're adding kind of a parent survey, asking about their perceptions of the program and talking about their access to the things that you've heard tonight and also their access to the teacher and kind of information back and forth from the teacher. The other thing that is new is that we're really trying to tie and identify the field trips into their previous knowledge and if they're learning and are able to apply what they learned on the field trip into kind of what they're learning in the curriculum for the few weeks that they're working on that project. Continuing, we're still going to do their literacy scores from the spring to the fall and we're still considering for elementary, the student attitudes towards STEM survey. It's really not a survey designed for upper elementary students, but we're going to try it out to see if students understand the questions and if so, we will provide that to our rising fifth graders to see if they're understanding the elements of a STEM curriculum. For sixth through eighth grade, we are continuing the survey. The survey was given on the STEM attitudes and so forth to the middle-level students last year and we're also looking at that field trip piece, does their vocabulary increase? Are they able to use what they've learned into kind of their everyday kind of component in their learning and kind of retain that piece with them? For elementary, middle, and high, we're going to be looking at the cost of running summer learning. We did receive $75,000 more this summer and that was to extend Monday to a full-day experience for students with the added transportation cost to go to places in Denver, et cetera. We will really focus on attendance this year because if you watch the statistics lottery, you will see the one thing that really does make a difference for students in summer learning is attendance. And last year, we had poor attendance. And so, we came with you with very flat results, meaning that we could not show that summer learning had an impact on our students. And that was because our attendance, too, what we believe, was that it was really hovering in the low 70%. So, there were some families that just couldn't come or that they would show up one day a week, et cetera, and it was treated more like a drop in daycare rather than an actual summer learning experience. And we really wanted to make sure that parents understood the value of the summer learning program. We will look at the I-Ready data once again and then for high school, we will look at the completion rate. Are they completing the credits? Are they receiving the support that they need in order to move on in the courses that the high school students are taking?
We did have an opportunity to start to develop some partnerships this year with the city of Boulder and with the city of Broomfield. As many of you know, I'm sure our 21st Century grant money did run out. We had used that in the past to provide after-care for the summer program since it's only a half-day. We didn't have that money this year, so we did develop a partnership with the city of Boulder, who was able to offer free childcare for our students, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays for the full five weeks. And the city of Broomfield offered very low-cost, $15 a day for the students to be able to have after-school care at those programs. Unfortunately, we didn't get anything developed with Lafayette, Superior, and Louisville to give them the opportunities and have definitely noticed a difference in the attendance there, I think, due to that, but we were able to develop those this year. We have over 175 students signed up with the city of Boulder and we're about 30 students now with the city of Broomfield to provide our after-school care. For high school, this year, we did all credit recovery classes online and so the only brick-and-mortar classes we have are PE. There's two PE classes and three sections of the wellness in action and one session of the aerobic walking.
So, I believe we shared with you in October that the online learning, we were going to eliminate the credit recovery at the Arapahoe campus. We had very low attendance for that and we moved it to online learning. But with that, we did provide mentors and one-to-one support for any student that was struggling with the online component or that needed that extra support, that we do have mentors that students can meet face-to-face with the actual teachers. And then, these are the PE classes that Melinda was referencing. And then, finally, we have the two dates that have been set to, not next week, but the following week, where we can visit two different sites and if there's additional sites, we are taking a break for the Fourth of July week, but we could look after that week if you would like to. If these dates don't work for you, we could add some more experiences. So, President Fuqua, we'd be open for questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Board members, any questions? Comments? Yes, Tina?
Yeah, thanks. This was a great presentation. I have a couple of questions, two questions. The first question is, for the kids that are doing the after-care in the city of Boulder, did the children have to show that they were residents of Boulder to qualify for the free after-care or could they be bused in from other sites? Do you know?
I believe that they had to show that they were residents of Boulder because it was city of Boulder money and housing, Boulder housing, that funded it.
Okay.
But I can double-check on that, but I believe that that...
Okay, I would just be curious to know how they showed residency, if it was just an address or a utility bill?
I think it was just through us. If they were signed up with us and they were in IC, then we verified that they were, they were part of our program.
Okay, great. And then, my other question is, for the PE classes that were offered, did we fill all the demand for it or did we have people who still wanted to go but weren't offered a spot?
No, I think we filled the whole.
We did, we added another section, so we actually have open spots, but there was a waitlist, so we did add another section.
Okay, great. So, no, everyone was able to take PE?
Correct.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Other questions? Jenny?
Thank you for the presentation. I enjoyed it, it was easy to understand, and I did enjoy visiting the middle school programs last year. And if I was honest, I would say that there was more energy in the middle school programs I visited than in the elementary, so I think, it wasn't that it was a bad program, I think it was just time for a refresher and so I'm looking forward to, I'm planning to make at least one of those and then looking forward to seeing those in action. They sound really fun. So, and this is just a silly, this is just a minor question, but when you describe the programs available for, like, say, sixth and seventh and eighth-grade students, is that rising seventh graders or students that have just finished that course?
Rising.
And I ask because I noticed seventh grade especially was related to the seventh-grade curriculum, so it'd be something they had before they started seventh grade, the biology and such?
It is for the rising. All of the summer programming is for rising, so first grade would be the rising first graders and so forth, except when you get into high school, obviously.
Okay, okay, great.
But yeah, I don't know enough about the curriculum in seventh grade to know that...
It looked like it might be related for the seventh grade, so it struck me that it would be useful for them. So, it just made me curious, that's all. And then, the other thing about high school was, you said there was only the online, but some of our high schools, and I visited them, some of our high schools have their own programs that they run during the summer that are not run by the district. Are those programs still in existence if the high school wants to offer them or did we get rid of those?
Well, all administrators were asked in December and January that if they were doing anything for the summer programming, whether it was like the July Warriors or Centaurus kind of experience, et cetera, that we were looking at, especially one with the facility use and the bond with the construction component. For instance, we had to move a lot of Centaurus summer programming into Angovine this summer and that's why it was, it made sense for Melinda to kind of coordinate the efforts, that we asked that if there was any kind of programming, that we would run it through the summer learning, that we would do the registration, we would do the tracking, we would do if there's fees, et cetera, associated with that. So, I don't believe that there is much out there, if anything, right now.
Can I just say, I think that's a shame. I've visited Centaurus in particular and I know that, or I believe there to be a need for our students, some of our students who might be the same students enrolling in some of these summer programs, to have something that helps the transition to high school and it certainly looked like, particularly Centaurus, Centaurus is the one I remember, was running a really nice program and it just strikes me that that's a real loss.
So, we agree with you and we do have the Centaurus Warrior program going. It is running under the summer learning umbrella, so they are doing their transition program. It's held at Angovine this summer, but we agree with you and when we worked with Centaurus, we said we agreed, so we are actually funding that through the summer learning program.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I thought that you said that it was gone.
That was the only transition program.
Okay, okay, okay. And I hope that we'll watch and see how successful that is and maybe be able to replicate it in our other high schools at some point. And one more question, which is about the assessments, and I'm glad to see that we're getting a little more creative about assessing the successfulness of our programs because some of the, some of the things you've added strike me as very sensible. But I want to know, you had some information about assessments that students would take when school starts again and I wonder if those are assessments that all students take or is it just the students that participate in the program?
Right, so that would be the I-Ready assessment and so we have the spring results for I-Ready for all students that participated in our schools during the school year. And what we used, as we did last year, is to compare the results between the spring and the fall I-Ready for students who attended summer learning, compare that to the students who were invited to summer learning but didn't attend.
Okay.
To see if there was difference. Now, that means, as we shared last October, that we don't know if the people who did not attend had different experiences or they had other summer programming or what have you, but that was about the only basis that we could really think about, that these students were invited, they didn't show up, we don't really know what they were doing, but just kind of looking to see if there was an impact.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jenny. Other questions? Kathy?
And I, too, attended those classes last summer and they were just great to watch. But I have a follow-up question to Jenny's about the high school. So, was there no need for, I mean, what was the reason that there weren't the classes offered in the other high schools during the summer? The summer...
The biggest reason was construction because most of our high schools are under construction this summer, so we have limited space. So, that's where the conversation originated from, is the space. But Centaurus was one that felt like without it, their graduation rate might drop and so they wrote a proposal to us, asking us for the funding to support that program. And so, we were able to do that at Angovine with many of their athletics and other things that normally happen in the summer on campus.
And in high schools where there isn't construction going on, was there no need for those programs or what happened in those high schools?
There wasn't a proposal from those high schools.
And then, on your slide about high school, 2017 and beyond, I'm just curious about the graduation requirements team and what you're doing to design the summer academy, what that looks like, if we could get a little more detail on that because that looked intriguing and interesting.
So, two summers ago, we started with just changing the middle-level curriculum and really thinking about what can we do to get middle-level students to participate in the summer programming. This year, we really focused on elementary. So, next summer, with the graduation requirements changing and not necessarily focusing so much on credit recovery, which is what we've been doing in summer learning experiences for students, it's really about maybe advancements or different pathways or internships or different experiences that students can use now that could get them into a graduation that's maybe above and beyond a credit, so to speak, in the school. Now, we haven't started talking about that yet because the students that the new graduation requirements that it will affect are not even in high school yet and that's starting next year. And so, we want to make sure that their summer experiences isn't just about a credit recovery piece, but it's for any of the pathways that they may want to experience or what they choose to do to get graduation requirements.
Do we have any opportunities for students to do internships or mentorships during the summer as part of a summer learning program?
Not yet, but I think that's part of working with Dr. Schaefer on the career and tech education component and really thinking about what does that look like, you know, not just during the school year, but also during the summer, because that is one of the pathways and that test or that industry certificate could be part of a graduation requirement for a student.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other questions, board members? Yes, Richard?
Thank you all. I appreciate the presentation. I learned a lot more about summer learning than I knew before. I have a couple of questions. Do you have anyone in the front office or whoever people communicate with that is bilingual?
We do. We have a person in my office in community schools that's bilingual.
Okay, and that's the person that is kind of designated to receive the phone calls that are coming in from Spanish speakers?
Correct.
Okay. There seems to be some confusion about eligibility. Is that going to be somehow cleared up or some kind of communication being sent out to alleviate that confusion that's out there?
We actually are looking at reworking that completely next year. I've already talked with Dr., with Sam Messenger about a different way to do this, if we could use our assessment people in the building to help determine who needs the summer learning program and work with the teachers, because currently, teachers do not have input on which students are attending. I believe that's a very important aspect that we're missing, which has caused some of our communication problems this year, so I'd like to see that happen at the building level. We sent out 6,000 invitations and have seats for 1,400 students, so I think we have to remediate that for next year and figure out how we invite the students that we know truly need it and work with them to make sure that they're enrolled and registered and ready to go. It's just too big to send out that many and then make sure that our neediest students get into the program.
The other question, too, based on some of the comments that we heard tonight, the online enrollment, is that, are we going to be doing something to alleviate that so that some of the folks that can't access it can access enrollment information and...
Yes, what we discovered was elementary parents do not use IC as frequently as middle and high school parents do. So, the barrier came because they don't know their username and passwords like middle school parents or high school parents do. So, we have been talking to the elementary principals to see what we can do to help educate our parents at the beginning of the year so they're not just accessing applications for online, for summer learning, but also for free and reduced lunch or for the other things that we have that go out through district messenger. We discovered many parents didn't have accurate information, so it was a great way to clean that up and make sure we have correct email addresses and parent, parents, both parents were being contacted, so we were going to work with the elementary principals to try to do more of that at their back-to-school night in the beginning of the year time as well. The sites are translated into 21 different languages, so we did have that this year, but I understand that the access part of it was difficult, so we'll continue to work on that.
Now, there are some concerns around the registration shifting, the deadline shifting, if not too clear for some parents, is that being looked at?
Yes, it definitely took longer. We had originally set a deadline for registration for about three and a half weeks and we didn't get that many registered, so we did push that back and continue to push that back until about last Wednesday, when we completely shut down the registration, was last Wednesday. So, we recognized that there was a problem and continued to push it back so that we could get as many students enrolled as possible.
Couple more questions. The cost of summer learning is a concern also. I'm understanding that there's a $550 tuition. It's waived, obviously, for some of those free and reduced lunch children, but the $50 parent fee, it looks like only half of that is waived. Is there any way that sliding fee schedule? I don't know, but it seems like even 25 bucks for some of the low-income families I know is extremely high.
Yes, so we determined that it cost us about $600 a student to put them through the summer learning program. Students that qualified for free and reduced lunch, ELL, or on a read plan, that $550 tuition was waived, so it was a $50 parent responsibility portion and that was really set up to ensure that parents wanted their students in the program and understood that we did want them to come. Research shows that if students attend at least 80% of the time, then they have some retention. attend at least 80% of the time, then they have some retention. They have the ability to retain anything less, even one day less than that 80%. Students do not retain their learning. And last year, like Leslie said, we were in the high 60s, low 70s in attendance percentage. So the $50 parent responsibility portion was just meant to, to help parents understand, kind of have some skin in the game, to have them bring them to, to the summer learning program for at least 80% of the time. We waived it initially. If they turned in a tuition waiver, we dropped it to $25. If the families let us know that that still didn't work for them, we've taken anywhere from $1 on up to 50. There's many families that paid $5, $4, whatever it was that they could afford, we took that. We didn't want this to be a barrier, just a, an opportunity for parents to understand that it was important for them to come. It's hard to do the field trips and the projects without the students being there at least 80% of the time.
No, I understand all that. How do they get the information as it relates to the waivers and that sliding fee, you know? I understand that, yeah, it is important for parents to have skin in the game, but sometimes there's burdens. But how do they get the information that if you pay a dollar, you can still participate?
So we relied on our administrators at the sites, as well as our liaisons. If they identified families for us, we contacted them directly, or had the liaison reach out, or somebody within the school that had a relationship with the family, and let them know that we would accept anything that they could afford.
Thank you. Couple more. Children in private schools or home schools, they're not eligible to attend? Is there a reason for that?
It's strictly, right now, just based on availability. So we did take students, if we had space available, we did take full paying tuition students. But we didn't do that until after May 15th, when we felt like everybody had a good possibility to get enrolled that wanted to be enrolled. We opened enrollment on February 15th. So we wanted to make sure that students that needed to be enrolled got enrolled before we opened it up. But we did take some private school students and some full paying tuition students.
Thank you. Some parents are confused about whether schools had received their payment or not?
I think there was some confusion on trying to get the money from the schools to the district. We, we did the best we could. I realized that we need to make some changes for that next year. But there was definitely some confusion on, on some paperwork, on just getting it transferred over.
And the other one, is the confusion whether children were enrolled or not? Is that cleared up? Was that, was that an issue? Is that a problem?
I believe so. All of the families that were, that were rostered got welcome letters. And then as people called in and said, "We didn't get a welcome letter," then we realized they weren't rostered due to, they hadn't paid anything. So we were able to get them brought back, brought into the program once we realized that.
And my last question is transportation logistics is not very clear on the website? That's what I'm hearing.
The transportation dates?
Logistics.
Logistics.
Probably because we just got it finished. We barely got it finished. We had people coming in on Friday, finishing it up. Because we did allow students to enroll till the very last minute, which did cause quite a bit of confusion with transportation, and changing stops, and adding buses to try to make sure we got everybody included. So it was not out as timely as it could have been.
Well, I want to thank you very much, because I know that there's a high number of English language learners enrolled in the summer learning program. There's also a huge number of kids on read plans enrolled in the summer learning program. There's a huge number of SPED kids enrolled in the summer learning program. And the question that the lady had, that talked first, was in reference to SPED. Is there any way that someone can get back with her, so that, so they can explain to her why her child was not allowed to be enrolled in, in the summer learning program?
We have spoken with her a couple of times, but I'll be happy to contact her again.
And she clearly doesn't understand it.
We will reach out again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Shelley?
Thanks for the presentation. I learned a lot from it. And I just want to thank you very much for your honesty about how well the program was working or not working, and your, your efforts to try and evaluate the program. So many times, we sit up here and, and there are programs going on, and we're spending money on them, but there's no sense that they're being evaluated, or that anyone's taking a hard look at whether they're working. And so I really, really appreciate the fact that you're trying to do that, and that you're looking at ways that this can be improved. I think you're on the right track. I think it's going to be a great program when you get all the, you know, the, you know, difficulties ironed out. And I thank you for your hard work on it. Thank you.
Thanks Shelley. Other questions, board members? Kathy?
So Joe, I think I'll just send an RFI, because I'm still confused as to how decisions were made to not have some of the brick and mortar programs at the high school. And we don't need to spend the time here now, but I'll just send you an RFI on that.
Tina?
Yeah, I just had a quick question now that your registration is over. What was the makeup of the students? And I'm sorry if you already said this, in terms of ELL, FRL, and SPED, what, how did that break down?
We sent this on June 2nd in a RFI.
Okay.
But we, we could get back with you after this week, because we still have students coming in. And so we're trying to figure out who's showing up and who's not showing up in order, but we can update, but we have all the ELL numbers, et cetera, in the RFI.
Okay. Well, because I can't remember.
Yeah, I can tell. Do you want me to?
Yeah, I was just curious, yeah.
Sure. So, right now, we have total students, we had a little over 1,900 students enrolled, rising first through rising eighth. This is not the high school component and online. And so of that, FRL students, we had over, we had 1,270 free and reduced lunch students. ELL students, we had almost 800. 797 of those students were ELL. For special education students in the program, 447 students have active IEPs that are in our summer learning. 81 students with individual education plans, IEPs, are attending the ESY, which is something that parents and special education providers during the school year, through the IEP process, qualify and put them into an extended school year for special education. That's not part of what we do. It's under the special education umbrella. And then 38 students have a 504, are attending summer learning as well. For read plans, and this is only up through fourth grade, so with that, 246 students. And we had elementary, we had 213 students' families pay the full tuition for elementary, and 102 pay the full tuition for middle.
Okay. And some of those numbers will be double counted, right?
Correct.
Because you could have a special education and be an English language learner as well.
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Okay. And do you, do you worry about imbalance between maybe typical and atypical learners in the shared learning environment? Is that something?
Well, that's why we opened up, last year, for middle level, we opened it up to everybody. We invite every student in middle level to come. This will be an interesting kind of, let's see what the results are in elementary. Because we are funded through Read Act funds, title funds, and general funds, that we do need to target specific demographics. And if we move this all to general funds, especially in elementary, then we wouldn't have, I guess, the target so much on, on getting the students that need this. I do think, though, that these, the students that maybe don't have the experiences, or that may need extra support, I mean, I think that this is going to be a great program for them. And I think we have more students that are not out of, for elementary, to have 213 students paying full tuition means that they are not in an ELL, FRL, or Read Act. And that's 213 across our district. So that, I think, is good news, because that's not something that happened last year.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks Tina. Any other questions, board members? Richard?
I just want to thank the gentleman that so graciously gave his time to translate for the señorita that's sitting there with us tonight. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. With no further questions, thank you both for the informative presentation and the response to our questions. We'll look forward to hearing how it went. We'll move now to the next item on our agenda, which is action items, consent grouping. I'm required to read all these? Is that the, basically the law? Yeah, okay. Eight point, that includes 8.2, approval of minutes, May 22nd, 2017, special meeting. 8.3, approval of minutes, May 23rd, 2017, special meeting. 8.4, approval of minutes, May 23rd, 2017, regular meeting. 8.5, approval of minutes, May 24th, 2017, special meeting. 8.6, approval of minutes, May 30th, 2017, special meeting. 8.7, approval of minutes, June 2nd, 2017, special meeting. 8.8, approval of minutes, June 5th, 2017, special meeting. 8.9, approval of minutes, June 6th, 2017, special meeting. 8.10, 2016-17, additional budget appropriation. 8.11, 2016-17, additional transfer of funds. 8.12, 2017-18, cash management. 8.13, acceptance of donation, El Dorado K-8. 8.14, acceptance of donation, Flatirons Elementary. 8.15, acceptance of donation, Food Services Department. 8.16, approval for purchase of Microsoft software licenses renewal, 2017-2018. 8.17, award of contract for district-wide radio network. 8.18, cancellation of July 11th and July 25th, 2017, board meetings. 8.19, change order to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Creekside Elementary School. 8.20, change order for the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Metalark School. 8.21, mental health partners amendment. 8.22, petroleum, oil, and lubricants purchase and delivery. 8.23, ratification of negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Classified Association affiliated with the Colorado Educational Association and the National Education Association, BVCEA. 8.24, ratification of negotiated agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Educational Office Professionals. 8.24, 25, ratification of negotiated agreement between Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Para Educator Association. 8.26, supplemental student insurance. 8.27, grant, food service, no student hungry weekend nutrition bag program, City of Boulder. 8.28, grant, instructional services and equity, consolidated federal programs, titles 1-, 2- , 3- , and 4, Colorado Department of Education. 8.29, grant, food service, fresh fruit and vegetable program, Colorado Department of Education. 8.30, grant, instructional services and equity, Title VII, American Indian Education, U.S. Department of Education. 8.31, grant, special education, IDEA preschool, Colorado Department of Education. And 8.32, grant, special education, IDEA Part B, Colorado Department of Education. Any motion? Anybody? Motion from Shelley, seconded from Jenny. Discussion, oh, sorry. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I've got a question.
A question. Jenny?
Just a quick question. I apologize I didn't warn you. I had a quick.
Well, all our buses are on radios.
Okay, thank you. That was, that answers that question. Thank you.
Radios for the buses.
That's it. Good enough.
Other guests, Tina?
Yeah, just a general question for a much later date, but I would like to hear at some point, something more about our relationship with mental health partners. I know it's a really important community partner that we have, and I'd love to know how it's working, and sort of what are the things for students. But definitely not for tonight. We're, at some point, great.
I'll put Mark on the spot, but can you address that now, or would you like to do it in an RFI?
Another time's fine. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Laura, could you please call the vote on the consent grouping?
Belval?
Yes.
Benford?
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia? Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on our agenda is an action item, 9.1, ratification of meet and confer process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team, professional technical employees and non-represented employees. Need a motion? From Kathy, a second. From Jenny, discussion. Tom?
Thanks, Sam. I move that we amend Agenda IM 9.1, which is the ratification of meet and confer process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team, professional technical employees and non-represented employees, to remove Resolution Number 17-18, remove the Boulder Valley Public School District Leadership Team Professional Technical Terms and Conditions of Employment Handbook, and remove COLA and steps for cabinet-level positions, which consist of salary ranges of 18 and above. Then add that the board directs our interim superintendent to commission a salary comparison by a reputable market analysis firm, and have written copies available for board review. The interim superintendent will then review these ranges and positions, and recommend to the board what these ranges should be, including any COLA for 2017-18. This should be completed and recommendations provided to the school board by the first regular meeting in August 2017, which then can be made retroactive to July 1st, 2017.
Tom has moved that amendment. Does that require a second, Melissa? A second from Shelley. Do you have a written copy of the amendment?
I do.
For our board secretary?
For everyone, too.
Oh, for everyone. Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Tom, which page are you referring to? In the, it says, where, where would you amend the language in the, when you say 17-18?
I'm, I'm saying that we remove that resolution.
Right. Where is that? Where?
That there are three items here, as attachments.
Yep. I'm on the attachments.
Okay.
Why don't you point me right to it? Is it in the terms and condition, or the?
No, there is a resolution. It's called APT Resolution.
Oh, got it. Got it.
Okay. And if you open that up, it says Resolution Number 17-18.
Okay. And so how many positions does this affect?
So this will affect our cabinet-level positions.
And how many is that?
Well, let me open it up here, and I will count it for you. So it would be essentially salary range 22, 23, and 24, which consists of the Chief Information Officer, Assistant Superintendent School Leadership, Chief Financial Officer, Legal Counsel, Assistant Superintendent Instruction and Equity, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent Strategic Initiatives, Chief Facilities Officer, and Chief Operating Officer.
And that's on page 28, right? Is that what I'm looking at?
I am looking at page 28. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I was able to find it. Amazing.
And as you recall, we have empty positions in a number of these slots, due to resignation, retirements, and so on.
Okay. And could you walk me through a little bit why you're interested in this particular group and not in 17 and below? Just with the?
Well, first of all, let me talk about what I want to talk about, why I want to do this. And then after that, perhaps we can, we can talk about questions, okay? All right. So let me start with a little bit of history here. As you recall, the last board meeting, I asked this item be tabled. It came before the last board meeting. And the rationale I gave then is that, you know, during an investigation that we have had, there, the board became aware of some issues associated with salaries. Shelley then had, because of this, I assume, had asked for an RFI on cabinet-level salaries. And there were numerous responses for that over, I don't know how long, Shelley, a month or so thereabouts. During that process, there was a discovery that the APT handbook that was in effect last year was never approved by the board, which has to be approved per our policy GCB. So I, I, at the time that we voted to table this, Sam asked if I would follow up with an RFI on the information I'd like to have. And so I did so. And that was denied by Mr. Sleeper based upon the amount of time he felt that would take. So I came back and asked for some of the specific documents over the years, which I did receive PDF versions of those. Did not receive comparisons of those documents. You know, Melissa gave us an RFI response to you that talked about comparisons from 2015, but 2015 was not approved by the board either. So I really never have gotten any comparison of the last board-approved APT terms and conditions, which was in July of 2014. So I have not received any information at all relative to that, other than the original documents, which are quite large, you see, and I haven't had time to go through them myself, nor should I think. myself, nor should I think, that should I, I be required to, I think that should be provided by staff. I also asked for Word versions, so I could do the quick Word compare to find out the changes, and I haven't been given Word versions either. So, that's a little bit of the history. But in, in looking through these, I am, I am concerned about cabinet-level salaries from the RFI information we provided being above reasonable and comparable levels for similar front-range districts. We have some cabinet-level salaries that are $200,000, and I just need to know that, is that reasonable or not? I don't know. Yeah, we haven't gotten any information. There's been, Shelley asked for market comparison data, we got verbals from another person, I never saw any written documents of any, any firm that had performed that. So the, the, the version here, APT, that's on our agenda for approval, the only thing I can see is changed from the 2016 version, which we didn't approve, is the date. So we know that, that our attorneys have recommended some changes to some of the clauses, particularly on termination, and that we need major rework on this.
Tom, that's confidential information, we shouldn't be discussing that in an open meeting.
So we also need to limit the max number of sick and personal days that can be accrued. Right now, in that document, it's unlimited, that has caused some issues, and are all of our other employee groups?
Again, Tom, I'm cautioning you to be careful what you are disclosing and talking about lately.
I'm not disclosing anything, I'm just saying that's what they're, Kathy, it's unlimited.
I'm gonna take a little break, just a sec.
Okay.
Just had to clarify reference Tom made. You can continue, Tom. Thanks.
Thank you. Additionally, the 2016 version that has been updated for the date still has the old salary schedule. So for our other employees, or for all the employees, it does not reflect either steps or COLAs in the salary schedule that's in this document. So that needs to be updated. The, the document does not distinguish between the three categories of employees at administration level, professional and technical admin B and admin C, so we really don't know by looking at APT terms and conditions what COLAs or steps that we're actually voting on for which people. So that needs to be corrected to clearly identify these. There's outdated language in the MOUs, referring back to things that happened in 2013 that don't exist anymore. We also need to address, in my opinion, training gaps that we have in, on policy, and that, that we want to make sure, in my opinion again, that we have a legal counsel review all long-term employee contacts that have, contracts that have necessary language regarding reporting obligations with discrimination and harassment, which are not in the document. So that's, that's a brief history of my, my rationale for wanting to, to take the time. We have interim superintendent that's coming in with Cindy Stevenson, hopefully we will approve her on Monday as that position. She has extensive experience as a superintendent, she can take an unbiased view at what's going on here, she can commission a, you know, reputable firm that we actually will get a report to that the Board can see, and then given her experience, she can make recommendations to us. And I believe those can be done for that level, number of employees within a month or so, so that by our August 15th meeting, or mid-August meeting, whenever the first one is, that recommendation can come to the Board, and we will have a document now that is going forward, that will be under contract with our employees for, for the full year, and also under contract for whatever employees we hire in these positions, that will now reflect, I believe, a, a much better document that is actually accurate and correct.
Let me ask you a point of clarification. Some of what I hear you saying is you're, there's some confusion about information, you're looking for clarification, but if we tabled this for two weeks and brought it back on the 27th, that would not be sufficient?
Um, well, certainly, I'd hopefully have a chance to find out what the differences are, but I don't believe that, well, I suppose we could commission, you know, Cindy to go look at and see what she could do in two weeks, maybe if we wanted to do that, I would be okay with that, to see if she could get something ready, have that, the document then reviewed by legal counsel with recommendations made as to what it'd be, the content of that would be. I wouldn't have a problem with that, it was just the timing of, of her starting and getting all this done that I was the most concerned about, that's why I recommended, you know, August.
Yeah, the salary survey, my understanding is we're doing, we're gonna do that, right? Is that correct? Leslie, can you tell us what the plan is for that?
Right. HR has already evaluated the building administrator salaries and worked with OMA Consulting in the spring, and the admin C group is up for that same review in this current year, and then the meet and confer group's plan was to look at that data and make recommendations to the Board for any changes based on the new market information. So that's already been queued up for this year.
So I don't want to wait a year and have this under effect for the whole next year, given that we're hiring very high-level folks, you know, in the coming year.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Shelley?
Well, I'm supporting Tom in this motion for several reasons. You know, on May 23rd, we postponed approval of this because we were requesting additional information, and I'm sure there were good reasons why we didn't receive it, but the fact is, we didn't receive it. And it's been at least 10 days since the Board requested that information about the Salary and Benefits Committee, including their working notes, the dates when the Board approved their recommendations, copies of the last approved APT and comparisons to the one we're looking at tonight. So we got some of that information, but we certainly didn't receive all of it, and from what we do have, it appears that there have been some irregularities in terms of how and whether the handbook was approved properly and the salary schedule. So, given that, just as we sit here tonight, given that we haven't received all the information that we requested, and all the, the points that Tom's mentioned about things that aren't quite right in the document, I think it's, I think it is appropriate for Dr. Stevenson to come in here and take a look at it and see what she thinks and how we should proceed at this point. And I don't think that postponing this until she has a look at it is, is any way inappropriate, or I, I think it's actually this, the safe thing to do, given that there might be some policy questions here that should be addressed. So I'm advocating that we, I'm in support of the motion that we just wait for Cindy to investigate this, you know, line of conversation and see what, see what she would come back with as a recommendation to the Board.
So let me ask Melissa on this issue of, of approval, can you provide, shed any light, or can you respond to Tom's concern? This, this may have not gone through the proper approval channels.
Well, the, the terms and conditions were approved by the Board long ago.
And I don't have the exact date, but those terms and conditions have followed forward, and they're, they follow through unless they're amended, and so the amendments have come to the Board over the years, and it might not be each year. For instance, I know last year where it was just the compensation changes, and those were brought through just the regular budget process as a change in recognizing the FTE and the compensation for the coming year, and so those were the only updates to the handbook, which has been on the website continuously available, and the Board hasn't raised any questions about that from year to year. So the terms and conditions have just remained constant unless the Board has acted to amend them. The, the policy that you referenced is that the Board has terms and conditions.
Okay, thanks. Shelley, then Jenny?
Thanks for that explanation, Melissa. I think that, you know, our budget's well over $300 million, and just because we approve it doesn't mean that we understand every single line item, and I think it's particularly important that we understand what our top administrators are being paid and whether it's consistent with the market. So I think that this ought to come before us every single year, and the fact that it hasn't is, is inappropriate. So we don't just approve the budget in a 307-year, $20 million bundle, we look at it, just like we're looking at it, we've been looking at it for several budget work sessions, we've been looking at individual items and what it's gonna cost us to implement those initiatives, and this is no different. We should see what this costs, and we should make conscious decisions about whether we approve it.
Jenny?
So it's my understanding from what you just said, that if we, that, that, that the terms and conditions will just remain in effect if we don't amend them, that the existing ones will. So we'll still have something in effect, it'll just be the ongoing terms and conditions which are pretty much, I mean, I didn't notice significant changes in this from previous years in this handbook, except for the salary schedule, it's pretty much the same. So that'll just stay in effect? If that's, you look a little confused, like that was incoherent. So then, so then, the only thing that would be different is the new salary schedule, and I'll go back to my comments from last meeting, which is, I don't see any reason to single out a particular group of employees. I do, I am very glad that we have a committee going forward that's going to relook at those schedules in the same way that I'm glad that we're looking at our association schedules, because I think we need to revisit the whole issue of sustainability, but I don't think that tonight's meeting is the place to do that. I think we should continue to adhere to, I, I just don't see any reason to single out a particular group of employees, and I, I, I don't even really know what to say about not approving the terms and conditions in the handbook. If, essentially, the same terms and conditions are going to stay in effect, that's fine with me.
Okay, Tina, then Kathy?
Yeah, thanks, Tom, for walking through that and giving more detail on your proposed motion, and thanks, Shelley, for your explanations. I, we received, I can't remember who requested the RFI about the terms and conditions, but the way I interpreted it was that we approved terms and conditions at one point, and that we didn't have to review it again because it carried over, just like the BVEA contract. We don't look at the contract every time we approve the salary schedule and the COLA, because that's a fluctuating percentage every year. And I, there's a little bit of an undercurrent that this wasn't transparent, or that it wasn't open, and I don't feel that way. It's interesting, I just wanted to express that. I feel that the handbook has been published every year, the salary schedule has been available to us every year, and that the COLA has been transparent, and I've always understood that our professional staff would receive COLA in step with BVEA. I never thought that there was a separate discussion that was gonna happen with that. So I don't, I don't have a, like, an issue with the irregularity. I do agree, and I'm happy to hear, that we're doing a market survey. I think the last one we did was three or four years ago, it seems like an appropriate period to look at what's going on. And also, and I do agree that we probably need to go through these terms and conditions, and I think that will be a process that will take more than the time that you're allotting. I think it will be past August 1st, and I think that's a good process. I don't think that it needs to be tied to the COLA for ranges 22, 23, and 24, that seems a little bit arbitrary to me. The other pieces, so we have a salary range for each of those positions, and Tom, you talked about hiring, and, you know, whether we'd be constrained, but if you look at the lower end of the ranges, they range between $118,000 to $125,000, so we can pick in that range, we're not tied, so it doesn't, I don't think that, that is a concern for me, that we're having to hire people at a certain level in the next year, and that we need to get the settlement in the next two weeks to prime us for hiring positions in the coming year. So I don't have any concerns about that, since it looks to be like we have flexibility there. So I would prefer not to single out ranges 22, 23, and 24. I do support looking at the Ts and Cs, we haven't looked at it for four years since it was approved, I think in the 2014-15 period, and I think that's a good idea, and I think the externa consultant doing the market survey, his staff has already initiated, is a good idea, and I hope that we can find a place to do those things.
Kathy?
I echo what, what Tina said, thanking everyone for bringing this forward, but I, I also support what Tina has said. My understanding of how we got to where we are is, first of all, that it has been a transparent process. All of these numbers are on the website, the Employee Handbook is on the website, and we're only talking a few positions, and it is up to us as the Board, one of our main obligations is to set the budget and to understand every piece of the budget. So I don't think it's fair to put it on staff that they're supposed to anticipate something that now, at the 11th hour, we might have wanted to know a year ago. The way we got to this was through meet and confer, and I worry that we look like we are acting in bad faith when we go against the meet and confer and go retroactive against the meet and confer that has been in process in this district for over 10 years, and all of a sudden, retroactively pull certain people up and say, even though there's been no allegations, nor could there be, of any malfeasance on the part of any of these people, and that if we want to go forward and look at this, I'm totally in support of all of that, and it sounds like we already are. And so why we would want to look in the rearview mirror and, and single out certain people for no reason that I can understand is really, really troubling to me. I agree that having Dr. Stevenson look at this going forward, there's a lot of things that we have learned that we want to look at going forward, and I'm welcoming that opportunity. But I think to be punitive and go backwards when we have a process in place that has worked well on the meet and confer with our various teams is a process that has served us well, and to, to undermine that completely causes me grave concern.
Thanks, Kathy.
I would also say that I don't, I think there've been a lot of misperceptions and misstatements. I, for one, have seen written documentation and lots of answers about the former, the former market survey. We have a lot of information about that. These salaries were not just plucked out of thin air, they were part of a market survey that may be a couple of years old, but we have that information, and it's on the website, and we have it through the RFIs, so we have that information currently. And yes, do we need to look at it going forward? Absolutely, but this has been the basis of a lot of thought and process and money and time and investment.
Thanks. Going back to Tina, unless anybody else has anything? Tina?
Can I move to amend the motion?
Is that within this context? So there is a, we, we moved the action item, we moved an amendment, now Tina would like to, I think, amend the amendment, is that right?
That's correct.
Am I, is that proper?
I, I mean, you would need to offer what that is. Yes.
Yeah, I think, Sam, that the amendment is on the table, it has to be voted on before we can amend it. Certainly you can amend it after that, but now there's nothing, there's nothing there.
I'm not sure, I'm gonna defer to my parliamentarian.
You can amend the amendment, requires a second, it's debatable.
So I'd like to amend the amendment?
Takes a majority vote.
Is that after the amendment is approved, or before the amendment is approved? Is that after the amendment is approved or before the amendment is approved?
Yeah, that's, Tom's point is that we needed to vote on his amendment prior to an amendment to his amendment.
Motion to amend is amendable.
Okay. So, it sounds like it is. All right. Uh, do you want further discussion before Tina offers her amendment?
But I would like to then have the option to amend the amendment prior to someone calling it to a vote. Otherwise, I'll take my chance right now.
I got, no, I, I got you. We will get you that option.
Thank you.
Okay. Shelley.
Yeah, I, um, I'd just like to say that, um, you know, it is true that we can bring new people in, Tina, and put them, you know, on, on the range. But the fact is, we've been bringing them in and our, our practice has been to bring them in at the 95th to 100% of the range, which the board isn't privy to. So, unless we want to say that that's not a practice we want to continue, we need to have a conversation about this, which is what we're having right now. So, I think that that's completely appropriate and I do think the range probably encompasses where we would bring people in. But as I said, we don't have any say in that and that's why I would like Cindy to look at this and see whether she think that, that's appropriate before we start bringing in people. I, because it's, my guess is that that range is somewhere would encompass those people correctly, but I'm not sure because I'm not a salary compensation expert. The other thing I would like to say is that in, in no way are we doing anything retroactive, Kathy. We're talking about a going-forward position here now. We're not talking about destroying the meet and confer process or, or doing anything like that. I have no idea where that's coming from. What we're talking about is a, is a APT in front of us and a salary schedule in front of us for the year coming towards us. So, what we're doing is we're talking about something that's going to happen, not something that's already happened. So, that's just not true.
Let Kathy respond to that, yeah.
The meet and confer would mean, Shelley, that we would meet and confer with the parties that we are taking adverse action with and we are not doing that. We are taking unilateral action and that is not meet and confer.
Shelley?
Kathy, this is not advert, adverse action. This is looking at something, seeing if it makes sense and then moving ahead in a couple of weeks. It's not singling anybody out, it's not taking adverse action. It's, it's being prudent at this point.
Okay, it is freezing salaries, though, which could be viewed as an adverse action.
But it would not be if, in fact, there was no reason to do that and we went back and retroactively gave those people the salaries that were in the salary schedule, which I believe is what the motion is proposing.
And, and we are singling people out. You've singled out people in certain salary schedules, so I don't know how you can't say we're not singling people out.
Tina?
What time period are we talking about now? I'm, I'm not sure if we're on a two-week timeline or an until-August-1st timeline. We're sort of all over the place here.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
The motion is August, uh, mid-August. Um, and I'd also like to point out that, uh, you know, I've asked for information on the meet and confer process and I have gotten zero information on the meet and confer process. So, so I don't think that we're not honoring it, I'm just asking for information. Now, we're not, uh, doing any adverse action, as Shelley pointed out, I'm asking for a review. The board can then decide what they want to do with that once that, you know, recommendation comes forward. It could be more, for all I know. They may be appropriate, for all I know. All I'm asking is let's take a look at it while we can here.
Tina?
So, I'm, I, so it seems like we're in agreement that we support the staff recommendation to do a market analysis with the OME Consulting, I think it's called, and they will do a market analysis and Cindy Stevenson will be, Dr. Stevenson will be in charge of that. And it seems like we have some agreement that we're going to be looking at the Ts and Cs in the handbook, um, and, and I, I don't think we need to freeze salaries to do that. And I, and I am really uncomfortable at this juncture on whatever day it is, June, you know, 13th or mid-June, to start freezing salaries. So, I, I'm not sure have, if, how they're connected, like, and if anything, I would, I would, well, I'll, yeah.
Yeah. So, first of all, I never use the word freezing salaries. I'm not proposing that we freeze salaries. I'm asking, will you go take a look at it and get a recommendation as to what the salary should be? Then, we can decide what we want to do, whether we freeze them, whether we increase them, whether we change them, whatever. I'm, I never said freeze salaries.
It reads here, just clarify, remove COLA and steps for cabinet-level positions. So...
Correct.
Okay, so, and that is from now until August 1st and then if they get Dr. Stevenson's support, they get that money back.
Yeah. And the only reason I say to remove is because it's listed in the action item in that document. So, that's something I don't want to approve right now until I know what we're giving steps and COLAs on because I don't know that.
Okay, because that sounds like freezing to me, but I'll refer to it as removing COLA and steps.
Right.
Yeah, Jenny?
So, I'm a little confused because I think we have a staff recommendation here, so it's not clear to me why if we're waiting for a staff recommendation and we have a staff recommendation, we don't just act on it.
All right. Now, we've concluded the discussion. You still have an amendment to offer? You can offer it at this time. An amendment to Tom's amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to, um, strike the first nine lines, except for the beginning of the sentence, starting the interim. And I would like to say, I move that we instruct the interim superintendent to review the ranges and positions in the handbook and the terms and conditions and recommend to the board what these ranges should be, including any COLA, and then, including any COLA period. This should be completed and recommendations provided to the school board as mutually decreed, agreed between Dr. Stevenson and the school board. I don't want to set August because it might be too soon to do the work that we need to do. Thank you.
Laura, did you capture that amendment?
No, I didn't.
Okay. We can, we can, uh, read it back, but, uh, if you're moving that amendment, it needs a second, a second from Kathy. Discussion of Tina's amendment to Tom's amendment.
I've got a question.
Yes, Jenny?
So, Tina, could you explain what you think the effect of that would be, just so I'm sure that I understand?
It, it feels to me, I'm trying to find some middle ground, that there's a strong interest in stating that we are going to review the handbook and look at the salary schedule. And even though it's already being done by staff, it seems like the board wants to say something more proactive. So, I'm willing to do that and that's how I'm trying to capture that. And I'm also trying to set a timeline that works with the superintendent whom none of us have talked to about this issue. So, I don't want to go forward and say, you need to do it by this date, when I just don't know what needs to happen at this point.
That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Can I ask for one clarification? Are you asking that the amendment...
Include the original motion and add to it this?
Well, I was asking to strike the whole top of the amendment.
I know, but we're kind of under the umbrella of the action item.
Oh.
And so, are you asking that that action item be voted on with the amendment added?
Yes, I believe that's what she's asking.
Yes. Does that make sense?
Yeah. None of the discussion here at this table during this period is about, uh, any of the other, uh, positions below those salary levels. About, uh, it's not about below. Yeah. Principals, it's not about that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, it does, because if we, the, the handbook applies to everybody.
The handbook does, yeah. The salary discussion does not. Tom, do you have a response to Tina's amendment to your amendment?
Uh, it doesn't accomplish what I would like to see.
Okay.
Sam?
Yes, Shelley?
Yeah, so, um, Tina, is there some reason that you did not include this sentence before the one that you started with?
Because it's already in staff's plans and it's already been commissioned, so I don't, I mean, I, we work with the OME group, I think, and so, I don't want to, I mean, I, we're already doing it, so I don't think it makes sense for that to be recommissioned. My sense is we've already, are commissioned. Is that accurate?
It's our plan to work on this. I'm not sure if anybody in HR has actually contacted OME and set up a schedule for when it's going to happen. Um, last time, it took us, um, about a year to work all, through all the logistics and we had to wait for other districts to, um, get their schedules ready and so, I'm not aware that anybody has talked to OME yet, but, um, it's been in the plan that that, we would review that this year. But I'm sure somebody could call.
And so, that was the only, it's not, I, I think it's going to happen no matter what we say, but...
Well, I like the idea that the superintendent commissions it, picks the salary consultant, takes, takes charge of that whole process. Probably, you know, yeah, chooses the consultant, does, you know, it's her responsibility to do this, not the staff's.
Well, it's, I think it's, from my perspective, it's the superintendent's responsibility to do everything. So, that's implied for me, I guess, is that, no, who else would do? I mean, everything staff does is under the direction of the superintendent. So, I, I'm not sure we need to stipulate the roles in this motion. But, you know, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, I, I don't know who else would really...
Well, if this is going to take, if, if this is going to take some time, if left to, you know, the staff's timetable, then I think what this accomplishes is that we are directly asking the superintendent to commission that survey when she comes in, which is very different than what we just heard just now.
Okay.
In terms of the timing of it.
So, Tina, could you live with that sentence above where you had started?
Yeah, I guess that's, um...
Somebody's going to have to read this back to me.
Understood.
And I would accept that if Tina accepts it.
And then, it doesn't change the fact that if, that this could all be done while things are on hold and then return to whatever Dr. Stevenson says is appropriate. I don't understand why we wouldn't just do that, which is...
I've explained why I don't agree with that position, so I wouldn't want to include that in my amendment.
Kathy?
And I also think Leslie brought up a good point, which is, part of this study is beholden on response time from other districts. And so, um, I don't think it's reasonable to think we can get this done by mid-August and so, we are putting certain staff in a holding pattern when we don't need to do that to accomplish the ends that I think we've all agreed that we need to accomplish.
Tom?
Well, I think, given the small number of positions we're talking about, that can be done by mid-August. It, it's not that many positions.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, just from, you know, from the brief reviews that I've done, trying to understand the salary structure that we have here, it's pretty uncommon to have, let me see if I can find the page.
It might be 28.
28, yeah. It's very uncommon to have no positions at 18, 19, 20, and 21 and to have four, um, gaps, um, between the principal and the, and the cabinet-level staff. That's just not something I've seen in other districts at all. So, I really think that this is worth looking at and looking at now. Uh, this is not normal. This is not average. This is not what you see in other districts, so...
Kathy?
A question. So, the salary survey is not just positions 22 through 24. It's a salary review of this whole schedule. Is that what we're looking at? Are we just looking at five salary reviews?
Yeah, I'll have to talk to HR. I know it's at least Admin C. They've done Admin B, which is pretty close.
So, it would pick up more than just these positions?
It would pick up all of Admin C and then I'm not sure if they have the Prof Text queued up for this year as well, but we could certainly find out. But Admin C would be, um, all central administrators.
So, that's what I thought. I thought we were talking about a broader salary review than just these positions.
I think we are.
Okay, well, Tom just said we're only looking at three, so that's why I was confused.
By August.
Tom would like to start with...
Yeah, that's why, start with that. And I think a, a full-blown analysis of all of our positions is going to take some period of time and I didn't, given the state of our district, I didn't want to, uh, try to push that all in, but do what we can. Certainly, get the wording, language of the terms and conditions to what we feel is appropriate, uh, but then, uh, start with the top piece and then as the rest of the year goes on, we can attack, you know, attack is not the right word, but we can review the, the rest.
Tina? So, I am fine to add that sentence to my amendment and, um, I'm also fine to punt on both amendments until Dr. Stevenson has a chance to review it next Monday and make a recommendation to us later that week.
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to table if, um, if we're going to be able to get to, uh, if, if there's more information that would be helpful and if it can get us closer to agreement as a board. I'm not sure if we can get there, but, um, we can table, uh, we can loop in, uh, Dr. Stevenson, assuming we approve her contract on Monday and get some of this additional information. Now, I think some of what you didn't get, Tom, was because we have an RFI request process and if it's going to take longer than three hours, that has to be more of a full board discussion. But if there's some stuff that we just didn't get to because we ran out of time, we can, we can probably work with staff to get you some of that additional information.
So, Sam, are you proposing then that we table this action?
Uh, I think, uh, I think that's what I'm proposing if I can do that in the midst of these two motions on the floor or if we have to work backward.
You know, typically, tabling it is indefinite and you would do a motion to postpone to a particular, you know, timeframe or date.
Okay, I'm going to move to postpone action until our regular meeting on June 27th. Yes. I just had a second from Richard, I think.
Right, so can I ask a question?
Discussion, yeah.
Can, Joe, what implications does it have if we postpone this schedule for another two weeks?
Well, the proposals, um, you know, goes into effect July 1. So, um, you know, what you have before you is actually the contract beginning July 1. So, in the next two weeks, I don't think it would, um, have a, um, high impact. What I am cautious a little bit is some of the information that, um, we've been trying to run down with these RFIs, um, is in a department that's pretty worn thin right now. Um, some of the actions that we've been asking Les, Leslie about tonight are actually human resource functions and we don't have an assistant superintendent down there now and we saw some mistakes in some of our personnel, um, submittals tonight and I think that's in a symptom of what we're seeing in there. So, um, you know, I tried working, um, at what we could give to Tom in a quick fashion, but some of those things are, um, in a location that the former assistant superintendent would go right to and for us, we'd have to go through file by file.
Okay. Did that answer your question? Okay. Uh, so, there's a motion with a second to table this to action on June 27th. Is there further discussion of that? If not, Laura, will you please call the vote? Will you restate that motion? It's pretty simple, but just so everybody's clear.
The motion is to postpone Action Item 9.1, ratification of meet and confer process between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley District Leadership Team, professional technical employees and the non-represented employees to the next regular meeting in June.
Okay. You call the vote?
Val Val?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. That took a little longer than I thought, board members. Um, I want to check in. We had, uh, I know we want to talk agenda setting, but, uh, we had tentatively scheduled to do some, uh, budget work session discussion after this regular meeting. Um, I know that a couple of you expressed to me, um, hard stops at 9:00 due to childcare issues. I'm, I'm willing to break and have a half-hour budget discussion. I'm not sure how fruitful it would be, uh, given that we've been in meetings since 5:00,